Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our December 10th Board meeting. We start all of our Board meetings with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for all. So, this is our favorite meeting of the year. We get to have a presentation by the Berlin High School. Imagine the stakes that go back.
Well, we'll move to the two sides.
That's okay. Yes, we can go in front. They're going to face the other side. Do we need to leave?
I think that's more unfollowing.
Yes, they'd like to have a picture with the board. Your government. Before you start, do you want a picture? So the board could join the matters.
We didn't just fill it. All right. Come on.
These two boys, make sure you get in the window right there. Okay, good. Hi. Let me take a couple more, right?
We didn't know if you write pictures for Mr. Roski.
Good.
So we're going to perform three songs from our winter concert that we just had last Tuesday. The first piece is "Locus Isti", which was written by Anton Bruthner, who was an European composer who lived in the 1800s and was important in the romantic period of music writing. Here it is. My 24. The next piece we have is a piece entitled "Where Peace Has Always Been", which is written by an American composer. It's pretty new, you know, modern, plural writing, but it's based off of actually a Swedish poem by Finlandia written by Savelius many, many years ago. So you might recognize just a little bit of some of the melody.
My love for you shall never fade. As flowers blossom in the field and birds shall have their fill, the harvest shall yield, shall be much greater still. When you look all around and you look deep within, you will find where peace has always been. my love for you shall never fade. Be still my soul, released from deep within, finding his loving will, where peace has always been. For little do you know, for little can you see unfoldings of the plan that grasps eternity. Be still my soul. Be still.
We have one more. It's jubilate deo, and it's a traditional holiday text. So thank you all so much for having us tonight. We look forward to coming back next Friday as we do our little tour of the schools. And we'll stop by and they can get their bread dip. So make sure that the bread dip is ordered. We wish you all a very, very happy and peaceful holidays season. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. So next up, we have committee reports. We'll start with the student representatives. We do not have any student representatives this evening. Alex has gone directly from football practice to basketball practice. And Jenna is also at basketball practice this evening. Both of them reeked out to both me and Brian unless knowing we'd be able to make it. And I guess on the note relative to the football team, just the recognition that we are very proud of their season. And while the outcome for the team is not what they were hoping for, they need to know that they had a hell of a season and we're quite proud of them. So congratulations in due to the football team.
As was said, for all intents and purposes, the public schools champion.
There you go. I like that. Item B on here is the committee appointments for 2018 and 19. So we've realigned, I've realigned the committee assignments. So for 2018 and 19, the Communications Committee will be chaired by Julia Dennis with Jake Fisher and Tracy Sisti. And Brian Benigni will be the administrative liaison. Educational Resources will consist of Adam Salina as chair with Kerry Sassu and myself on there with Jeff Cugno as the administrative liaison. And Student Achievement will be chaired by Richard Arorian with Jamie Miller and Tim Oaks. And Aaron McGurk will be the administrative liaison. So I look forward to the ones that we do in our committees this year. I guess this is as good a point as any relative to the other piece required. I can do that here, right?
Yes, absolutely.
I'm also requesting an ad hoc committee be put together for the sole purpose of reviewing and revising, if necessary, our policy manual. That committee, I'm looking to have chaired by Mr. Tim Oaks and one other volunteer from the board. Julia Dennis is quick to jump on, so Julia, thank you very much. Also on this committee would be the Superintendent of Schools, Brian Benigni, Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Aaron McGurk, one administrator from the high school, one administrator from the middle school, and one elementary administrator. And again, purpose of this, oh, and someone from PPS Services. I don't see one here, but thank you, Brian. Again, sole purpose is to review our policy manual. Kind of start to finish, it's been a number of years since we've gone through all of the policies and make sure that we are consistent with what comes from shipment and good ones, but also our own internal policies. So, Tim, I know you'll do a great job with that. Timeline is open-ended.
Thanks.
Set it up with your video, and you can go from there. There's, I mean, I think the policy manual is about this thick, so. But it's something that we really need to pay attention to and take care of. Next up is committee report. Earlier this evening, there was a student achievement.
Yep, we spent a lovely hour with Eileen and Aaron. Mostly Eileen's going through the program of studies. She, in our opinion, I think she has done a stupendous job in a very short period of time of cleaning out the closet of the program of studies and reorganizing and modernizing and kind of realigning the courses into more appropriate places, creating pathways for everybody. Some questions that were, are going forward. The impact of the new graduation requirements, I think is going to require another meeting, an upcoming meeting where we have a conversation. We always had more than enough credits, but they've kind of been reapportioned by the new graduation requirements that are coming out in next year's incoming ninth graders by the state. So the impact of that on electives more than anything else. And then also, we raised the question of who sells the electives to the kids that are coming in? Because as we know, it's been an ongoing issue of how do we get more kids into these electives? And honestly, the new graduation requirements are going to shift kids anyway into certain areas that they now have to take. I think one of the things she mentioned was 70% of the kids that are graduating right now and took a fine arts class, it's going to have to be 100%. So where do those 30, those 300 kids come from? Where are we drawing them from? And what are we drawing them into in order to meet the new graduation requirements? So these are all conversations that have to happen. The sales piece is a large part of it and is difficult at the high school because there are no department leaders in some of those departments, which makes it more difficult. But she, Eileen's got some very good ideas as to how to start the whole thing. So it was a very good meeting.
Excellent. Any questions for Rich before we move on? Next up, we have correspondence to the board. Brian, do we have any?
No correspondence this evening.
Nobody likes to write to you. Guess they don't.
You gotta make brain crunch.
But I'd like to just share that on Wednesday at 5:30 will be the dedication of the gym for Jim Day. I know that Mr. Maury has arranged for different speakers, some past wrestlers and people within the community to speak very briefly, as well as Jim Day's wife. And if the gym looks fantastic, it's inscribed on the side of the gym on the floor. It looks excellent, so that'd be at 5:30 before wrestling match.
You said that's Wednesday, right? That's Wednesday. That should be a special day for the Dave fam. A special event for the Dave fam. Thank you for sharing that with us. Item E on our agenda is about CAES CAPS. And it's here simply so that those members that were able to attend, if they would like to share any takeaways or experiences from the CAES CAP convention. I know that Rich, Julia, Jake were there. I was there, but unfortunately, I was working the floor as opposed to participating in other things. But at this point, it's a good opportunity for you to share some of the things that you saw and heard. So with that, I open up to you guys.
All right, I'll go. I'll go first. I saw one that I thought was going to be incredibly boring, and it ended up being kind of interesting on FERPA, whether or not. And on the implications of new security systems and cameras and who has access and who has the right to have access and when things become educational records. And it was very interesting, actually, and I think will have implications based on whatever new camera systems we get and security personnel, et cetera. So it was very enlightening, actually.
What was your biggest surprise?
That certain things become that, actually, it's not a surprise at all, that the state doesn't clearly define what becomes part of an educational record and what doesn't. And how you determine whether, it's very extreme. If you have cameras, you have a security footage of something. And it's, anybody can look at it live, but if it's recorded and we're maintaining it, then it's part of FERPA, it's covered by FERPA. And then if it focuses on two kids doing things they should not be doing, it now is part of the educational record of those two kids technically. It's very complicated, but it was interesting.
Interesting. Thanks. Anybody else like to share?
I'm on one second, Mr. Maury.
Okay.
Does anyone?
I mean, I'd just say in terms of, I think, being a speaker in terms of emotional intelligence, I thought that was a really great presentation talking about, you know, just in terms of just interacting and whatnot. So I think it was an opportunity to have superintendent and superintendent talk to how our school is part of this new initiative that's going through Connecticut.
I'll let Aaron add in, Jake. Aaron, do you would like to share what we're signed up for?
We've already been in touch with Yale for the summer training.
Oh, true.
I was encouraged to pursue that by our board members who were at Mark Brackett's session. So Mark is the director of the Yale Center for Martial Intelligence. And they offered, they have a special grant funded for a team of district leaders to attend summer training. And we got right on it.
Cool.
I emailed from the conference.
The same presenter, Mark Brackett, spoke to the superintendents at a meeting at the beginning of the year and the welcome back meeting. Mark Brackett was the keynote speaker then also. He has a great message and very, very well.
Are you ready?
Yeah, I kind of, I think I saved a little more. But I attended a few really good sessions, but one that stood out to me the most was Jake and I, I don't remember what district put it on. It was a Saturday morning session about communications. And basically talked about all of the different initiatives a district is doing to communicate with their community and keep them informed. And I know I came out of there with a lot of great ideas. I had my laptop open, I took a ton of notes. I thought it was on my Google Drive, and then I remembered I didn't have the internet in there. And one thing, you know, they recommended a book to read. I ordered it, I haven't read it. I think it's called like "To Sell Is Human", and it's basically like how we can naturally sell what we do. And they said they use that as a text for their board, for their communications committee, and how it helped really message what was going on in the community. They talked about how they had a column in their local newspaper, weekly column. And that was something Jake and I kind of said, oh, wow, that might be something maybe we could kind of get off the ground going. And just a ton of different ways of engaging the community. A lot of things we're not doing, a lot of ideas that Jake and I have already had that we just kind of need to put into place and get them all rolling. So I found that really beneficial.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So if you've not attended a CAES CAPS convention, you know, I highly recommend that you take the time next year. It'll be in November, usually the week before election time.
After.
Oh, after, that's right, week after election time. But there's a lot of great information. This year was not as well-attended as years past because we got a big snowstorm the night before and a lot of folks stayed away. But that actually led to the advantage of having a lot more opportunity to interact amongst your peers because there weren't quite as many people there. I highly recommend attending if you can. Anything else on CAES CAPS before we move on? Nope. Brian? I heard you, anything? I felt like you were going to say something.
I was going to draw your attention for the NSBA, which is national. That's what I was going to say.
Well, I'll let you talk about it because I haven't even looked at this.
The national, CAES CAPS convention is the local. The National School Board, NSBA, this year is striving to Philadelphia. In the past, I was fortunate to go to two different conventions. The keynote speakers and the sessions that they have at these national conventions are absolutely outstanding. They're national speakers. You're with other board members and superintendents from around the country. If any of you have an opportunity to go, I would love to go alongside of you. I think the information that's shared at a national level is even that much more to see what's going on beyond the state of Connecticut. It's not always, you know, sometimes it's out west, but this one is actually on the east coast and the dates are January 27.
Nope, this is the advocacy, not the...
Not the advocacy, okay, I can give you the dates. They're usually in the spring.
It's the last weekend in March.
Last week in March.
March and April, so we get the head full days.
The next brochure that I get, I can send the dates out to you and let you know if you're interested. If you are interested, please let me know and I could make arrangements for carpooling, wherever you go.
Okay.
Let us know when you have any.
Thank you, thank you.
I can tell you in one second. March, I don't know. March, yep. Conference of Public Education, there. Looks like it's March 30th, April 1st. So it looks like it's only two dates, two days, right?
Yeah, it's usually pre-CAP, it's pretty far.
I'll show you, that's right. We'll verify, I'll get the page over. Okay. Moving along to Audience of Citizens. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Nope. Moving along from there to Consent Agenda. Is there anyone who would like to add, remove, discuss anything that's in the Consent Agenda?
Wonderful consent.
All right, hearing none, I'll obtain a motion.
Move to, move to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Julia, second by Tim. All in favor?
Bye, Brian.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. March 30th, April 1st. It is March 30th. It is March 30th, April 1st, going back to the convention that. Next up, we have new business, facilities related updates. Anything new, Mr. Cugno?
Nothing really big. Facilities are moving along with their improvements. I do have a couple of comments on things related to facilities. Number one is security. You may know that over the last few years, obviously, the town, Longwood, have put in applications to get additional money for security type improvements. I want to report this past month, on the direction of the superintendent's office, we applied for the school security competitive grant program, round four. We don't know whether we'll get the money or not yet, but that's for improvements basically to McGee and to Rizwell. All security related, cameras, doors, locks, multimedia sharing infrastructure, interoperable communication, interoperable communication. For both of those schools, that finishes our schools because we already had in round three, we had an application that was approved. And we got that type of money to do those things in the other three facilities. Just in those, just to note, just in those two applications, round four is $439,000 and round three was $750,000. That gets massively worth 3% by the town and the rest from the state, excuse me, the other way, round four to three from the state and the rest from the town. So the town shares in these things, but it's a good way to leverage our money to get security work and see where we're trying to move things. Along with that, making sure we have the kind of money that we need to do what we like. That, of course, is on top of what we already have for vestibules, which was done a number of years ago. We know there's still some decisions that have to be made from what form of security we're gonna have from a security guard standpoint, a direction standpoint. I know the superintendent's working directly with that as is the chairman of the board. But this is hardware. We're moving forward to make sure we have enough money to do as many things as we can, given the dollars that are available. And the last thing is, like most security hardware, you also have to have the technology to go along with it. We've been directed by the superintendent to meet along with our IT people, along with our facility people, to see what we're going to need to complement in our budget from an IT standpoint, these security improvements.
Thanks, Jeff. Any questions for Jeff? Why are we so quiet today? I guess it's because of Jeff.
I have a question. So once round four goes through, you're saying that that covers all the security requirements from hardware, software?
That's when the original budgeting was done, we believe there's enough money to do that. The only thing that I have heard that there still may, may have, there may be some additional money depending on how many cameras we actually choose for all our facilities. When they did these grants, they chose a particular amount of 25 cameras, 35 cameras. And I've heard that depending on how the layout is, and depending on what we really want, we may need more.
And this $439, I think you said for round four?
Yeah.
McGee, Rizwell, this includes the cameras that were requested at McGee?
Yes.
All of them?
Includes some cameras that were budgeted back probably the beginning of last year. So I don't know if it's exactly which one you're speaking from.
We currently have, the system that we have at McGee is an antiquated system, it handles very much so, and it's limited cameras. System at the high school is a closed network system that deals with an outside vendor, and those cameras are proprietary towards that vendor. We're looking at the system that we'd like to put into the other schools. The high school has complete coverage, so we wouldn't, obviously, that's in the system's functioning at a high level. But the other building is looking at not proprietary cameras that would be linked back to the police station as well as that mobile viewing. So we have our IT folk looking at those cameras and not going with the sole provider where they service and it's their cameras. And those cameras are limited to what they can do.
So.
So as far as the numbers, we feel that the numbers at this point, he's working up, but we believe with the conversation with IT that yes, the money that's in the grant would cover McGee with having, you know, more than adequate coverage of cameras at McGee.
You just brought a point. So the cameras that roll in cannot be connected to the PD?
At this time, they're not. And the issue that we're running into is when they're proprietary, right, they're the only ones that service them, it's their system. If they're, if they're not, then we have accessibility to how we connect. So we're really working with our IT to, our IT in conjunction. We have a quote from that vendor.
The quote from the vendor to?
The high school vendor, yes.
To allow the PD to be able to hook into?
No, no, we haven't, we don't have the quote for the PD to hook into the system at this point because that system doesn't mesh with the PD's system.
So if we have cameras at the elementary schools, the middle schools, those cameras will be tied into the PD?
Yes, we're not moving forward until we get a quote with ones that could be tied into the PD, as well as be able to be viewed on an iPad, a phone, you know, any type of source device. So that if a police car, if a police car pulled up, they have the cameras up, right?
Exactly, real time.
Real time.
But we still have an issue with the high school?
The high school is issue that we're gonna, we're working right now with the grant to look at the other schools and then next up we look at the high school. Because right now, the high school has very good coverage with the system and it's working, you know, not kind of flawlessly. So as designed. But knowing that where the police department just updated their system, so, you know, I think when the high school originally was proposed and the system that was bid, that was not part of it. Because I don't believe the police system was at the level of that now. I could be wrong. But I know they just recently redid that, that room was totally redone, dispatcher for multi, multi viewing screens and so on.
So are you asking about or and or speaking about cameras that would be both inside and outside of the school buildings?
Yes.
Accessible to police?
Yes.
So that's interesting because as Rich was talking about FERCPA, I think about those who have a legitimate educational interest as FERCPA. I mean, the police only have legitimate interest if it involves something potentially criminal or, you know, illegal, right? But otherwise, access to student, well, could be deemed student records would not. So that's tricky to, in order for, I mean, I think it'd be something to explore.
I think those systems are usually something that you turn on access to the police department when necessary.
When there's something, okay.
But in a normal drive-by situation.
Well, I just heard.
They would have the, the systems, the, 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 when the police would activate the system, they would actually sign off that they're going into the system. Wouldn't be something they would monitor regularly. But if there was a crisis, then they could get into the system. So it wouldn't be something we would just, the police would have regular monitoring of. We already have outside cameras at the buildings, it's just not, not at the level that.
Right, right, right. So just in terms of accessing it via a phone or iPad, who would be doing that?
It would be the administrator to have access as well as security. Yep, that would be limited access. I mean, could it be hacked into?
Yeah, that's what I think.
I imagine it could. We'd have some type of security protocol in place. It wouldn't be that teachers would have access or anything of that nature. It would be very restrictive. And before we would go through, we'd obviously have a policy for it, of course.
Passwords would be at least one, two, three, four, five.
Right.
But the idea is that, you know, when we had the cameras in the past, we weren't as progressive as they could be today. So we're looking ahead, saying, if we're gonna spend the money on the cameras, why not have them tied back, the ability to tie back to the station? And to have local viewing where you're not fixed to one room, with one location.
And based on the FERCPA thing that I had heard, what Brian is saying connects directly with what they were presenting, which is you have to have an agreement with the police department and certain parameters of the usage of it. So that it's not just something they can view whenever they want to, for whatever reason, because then it does end up violating issues.
Absolutely.
I started, thank you.
I will make one more comment. The technology portion of it has changed, has grown and has changed some of the things we were planning on as a board. When I sat there, as we were planning on with security and planning on with cameras, a year later. I mean, the stuff that, the stuff the superintendent was just talking about wasn't on the table back then. It is now on the table and it's supposed to be much better, much more reasonable than what we were planning on a year ago. And I think that's the kind of stuff we're gonna continue to see as we go along.
Yeah, that's commonplace. I think the important thing to that is to make sure that we're not locked into a long-term agreement with the equipment that we, because of the speed of rate of change. If we put something in and we can't change it for five years, five years from now, we're gonna be replacing everything. I mean, it's a year-to-year discussion.
That's some of the concern, you know, that the high school currently, when we need service, we're tied into whatever the service rate is of that company. Because that's what we're trying to look at, something that's not proprietary, where we're not tied into it. And maybe have local IT that can service versus.
Capacity, technology capacity and staffing and ability to handle these, handle these programs and things is very important from an in-house standpoint. If we do that, and I know the superintendent's a big proponent of it, so, we're changing things.
Thank you, Jeff. And thanks for the questions. Jeff's asking, saying thank you, but I'm saying thank you. Next up on the new business, we have the report on district test results.
So I have the pleasure of seeking of reporting on the testing results for the tests that fall under our accountability measures. And. I have five minutes to do this before it restarts.
It's gonna be the best presentation ever.
Okay. So these are the test results that fall under our accountability index. And so in this case, for, it is the Spatter Balanced Assessment in grades three to eight and SAT testing at the high school. I did not include AP testing in this particular presentation because AP testing is not technically one of the accountability measures. But we will have an AP test result presentation later in the year for your pleasure. Before I go on, I want to acknowledge Carr Watson, the director of Math and Science, and Lori Jerkin, the director of Literacy and Social Studies. Because part of the presentation reflects work that they're doing in terms of continuous improvement in these areas. So you know that these are tests that are administered every year within the state of Connecticut. But they're really part of our federal mandates under what was the No Child Left Behind Act and now is the ESSI Act. That we have a legal mandate to present these tests to students every year. And the point of the annual assessment is for us to be keeping an eye on the pulse of student achievement from year to year. And particularly under No Child Left Behind came the mandate to break out the testing into subgroup performance to make sure that we're looking at the performance of students that sometimes are overlooked. Or you just look at the overall data of students in the school district. So I'm gonna start with elementary and middle school English Language Arts on the Spatter Balanced Assessment. This, in broad context, tests reading, writing, listening and some research inquiry skills. And the test is given over a period of days in the spring of the school year. So it used to be under CMT testing that everything stopped dead and schools did CMT testing for a week straight or two weeks straight. Now the testing window is much more of a rolling window. And the Chromebooks that you've provided for students in the district allow for more flexibility in terms of when testing can be done because it's not so tight in terms of, you can only do it when you have your turn with the Chromebooks now that everybody has Chromebooks. I put together the results into a chart that has down the left-hand side of grades three to eight, the number of students that were tested at each grade level. And then the level, number of students and percentage of students that performed at each grade, each level of performance on the test from grades one to, or excuse me, levels one to four. Levels three and four are grouped together at the end because that's considered meeting the goal standard. So you see that in most of the grade level areas, we're hovering around between the low to mid 60s, up to just over 70%. And all of these scores are above state averages and in sync with other districts in our district reference group. When we look at our DIRF comparison, this particular year, we fell at 11 out of 24 districts in our DIRF. You can see that there's a wide range of performance in our DIRF from 77% of students in English Language Arts meeting goal down to 44%. So a vast range within the DIRF. And this number is all of the students in grades three to eight combined in Language Arts. So it tends to be a more accurate record over time of where the district is really performing because it's a larger number of students that you're comparing than trying to track the like third grade up and fourth grade up in terms of like the grade by grade groups of students. In terms of our subgroup performance for English Language Arts, so this top bar shows the same all students numbers going across. And that now we break out into the two subgroups that we're most concerned with here because of the size of the population. The students with disabilities and the high need subgroup. So the high need subgroup is the group of students that includes students who qualify for free reduced lunch, kids who are English language learners and kids who receive special education services. And then the special ed population is large enough that we break out the students with disabilities separately. So you can see that there's pretty significant gap in performance. I didn't go with five minutes. So I'm going. So you see that it ranges from 28% of the students with disabilities at third grade meeting goal, dropping off to 3.8% of the students in eighth grade. So I just wanted to say that the special ed.
Do you want my name? Just talking about your saucers. Don't worry.
You've got a snazzy computer compared to hers.
Dongle over again.
So in terms of students with disabilities, we would expect students to have a disability, to have a different, potentially to have a different level of performance. Because by virtue of having a disability, that impacts their education. That is why they're in, researching the special education services in the first place. However, one of the things that we're always trying to do is to close the gap between the level of performance because of disability and their typical peers. So that's something that we're continuing to look at in terms of programming and services and options for students with disabilities. Because in some grades, the gap is, this particular year, in grades three and eight, the gap was not as large. But we have some pretty significant discrepancies as with the students who are in the high need subgroup. In mathematics, this is broadly tasting concepts and procedures, problem solving, communicating, reasoning and modeling. And overall, the scores in math are lower than.
And overall, the scores in math are lower than the scores in Language Arts, which follows the trend across the entire state. You see that very strong third grade performance this year with 76.5% of the students reaching goal. And one of the things that you can see here is that the number at level four, which is the highest level of performance, is the highest percentage of kids in that grade level. So, that's a very strong performance to have not only more kids reach goal, but to be pushing kids into that highest level of performance. You see across the grade levels that, again, with the exception of sixth grade, the performance is hanging right around a 60, mid-sixties in terms of percentages. In math, our DIRF comparison was slightly stronger than the Language Arts DIRF comparison. And again, there's a very wide spread of performance in the DIRF from 68.4% in this grade and down to 39.7%. Our math subgroup performance, you see a very strong performance at third grade in terms of the students with disabilities and the high need subgroups in terms of how they compare to their peers with some pretty significant discrepancies at the other grade levels.
Karen, can I ask a question? These are probably questions for Linda, but seeing as though she's not here, I'll ask you. So, for our students with disabilities highlighted in these charts or these tables, do you know, there's an alternate assessment offered to certain students who meet the criteria, right? So, do you know what percentage of these students perhaps took those, the alternative assessment?
We don't know the percentage of the time. There are about six students in the district.
Just six? Okay, total. So, even I, I'm trying to remember.
The state has pushed harder and harder to have
I know.
Fewer kids.
Which is torturous for some of our children, but anyway.
Is that six students? Is that between third and eighth grade that's combined?
Yes.
The state is much more stringent.
Actually, through 11th, the science in 11th grade.
Through eight and then 11th for science.
Sorry.
Just the alternative.
So, it used to be, back a number of years ago, there were, if you were a sixth grade student, you could take the sixth grade on-level CMT, you could take the fourth grade CMT, you could take a second grade level version of it, like there were lots of versions of it and now it's really restricted to the kids with the most significant cognitive impairments because NCLB really pushes every kid to be tested against grade level standards. So, that is, you know, that's part of the federal law trying to, in part because in some districts, districts were over pushing kids into the alternative assessments with the hopes of making their scores look better. And so, the legal pushback was to like push it back the other way and
I'm just biting my tongue right now, trying not to say anything about that decision. But, so our eighth graders, zero of whom met or exceeded goal, Matt and I were just having sort of a side conversation. I imagine that that's probably a byproduct of the students themselves in terms of their, it's not as though our eighth grader was just kind of falling off for some reason, right? It's probably by virtue of the characteristics of this subgroup that has made this a more challenging feat.
It's a very challenging assessment even for our students.
Agreed. Yeah, agreed, but I'm wondering why zero. I mean, I just, it just, I don't know if you can speak to that or not, but
I can't speak specifically to the characteristics of that eighth grade group of students, but you know, when you're looking at the grade level of students and you're typically talking about two, you know, you saw the ends on the other pages, there's typically about 200. You would, you know, the special ed, the students receiving special education is a small percentage of those students. And I don't know anything specific about the characteristics of that eighth grade group.
Yeah. And it's just conjecture on my part, just because it doesn't follow sort of a trajectory where kids are kind of, you know, it's waning as they go through the years. I understand that the curricular demands are more significant as are the demands of these assessments, but it doesn't follow that pattern. So, I'm thinking that perhaps it's
A better statistic we look at the growth, right? Growth target versus the, we're looking at meets or exceeds, but every student has a growth target.
That's exactly what I'm trying to get in a wrong about way.
We start to get the growth target, we get a look to say, are they making progress? No, they're not making progress. They're not exceeding or meeting at this point, but are they making progress? And that is what we're looking for.
That's what we hope for, but unfortunately, this is what Matt and I were having a side conversation about is that when these data are presented to people, people go, wow, there's a zero on there. Why are we failing that group of kids?
And that's why the state is more focused on the growth targets and we're just getting, started over the last two years, getting more into the growth targets and to look at our students making growth over time. And you know, that gap between being here at the meeting may only be here, but is the trajectory going up still, not flattening out or not decreasing as it might appear by the zero?
Exactly. Well, that's why I think a nice compliment to this would be a presentation that did.
You can put that on agenda.
I think it's just a
So, Kara, I'm just gonna tell you that
Complimentary.
Brian and I spoke about that and I asked if I could do the presentation with the growth targets when we do the rest of the accountability index because it pops out as a special category in terms of the rating that we get in the accountability index. So, we're happy to provide that information. I just didn't do it in this particular slide.
The reason why I'm asking these questions is I want people to recognize that children are, even though these standardized tests may not measure the growth that students are making, we need to look sort of at a more granular level
Absolutely.
At what students are achieving because, you know, for a number of our kids with disabilities, this sort of bill
I sort of went by it quickly in the first slides, but one of the first slides speaks to the idea that this is one assessment, it's one snapshot, it's not the whole picture of how students are achieving in the district.
Erin, before you click off of that, connecting what you're doing, not talking about these special ed students, but rather the all students, the number at sixth grade is obviously a pretty substantial dip. Have we already done, I'm not ignoring the growth aspect of this, have we already started to look at, is this a pocket full of kids who have a difficult time in math or does the math curriculum and the expectations get dramatically more difficult at sixth grade?
Well, I perhaps defer to Kara who's raising her hand to speak.
I mean, I can say a little bit, just thinking back to the last couple of years, that particular group also performed in fifth grade significantly lower than this year's fifth grade group here. So, the particular, and I can't speak directly to the students themselves, but we have seen that even in fifth grade, that group performed lower than what our current fifth grade era did. Also, the sixth grade, fifth and sixth grade tend to be tough grades in terms of the way the assessment is set up and so we have seen that to be pretty common. We are definitely looking, we made some shifts with our curriculum this year. We're hoping that will be of help as well and we're doing some professional development actually with fourth through eighth grade and we felt that really strongly impacted some of our grades last year, but our sixth grade last year was definitely a grade level that had struggled prior to sixth grade.
Thank you. Kara, can you speak to third grade intervention block that we put in?
So, in third grade, our results actually continually increased over the past few years and one of the things we attributed that to is to a wing block, we call it, what I need. And in third grade, four days a week, students actually get an extra half hour of math where we look at some of our critical areas because in each grade, there are a handful, three to four critical areas mainly related to number work that the students are supposed to spend a good chunk of their instructional time on. And we regroup the students and they get to go work with different teachers during this time to actually get what they need. So, whether it's some remediation or some enrichment, it's flexible throughout the year depending on the areas that we're focusing on. And that extra time is working wonders for the students because we're solidifying concepts, following units before they get into the next level. So, in third grade, they start work on, let's say, multiplication and division. We have multiple units during the year. Well, in between, we have an opportunity to remediate and solidify the conceptual understanding before we get to the next level. And for those kids who are ready, we actually do some extension work to dig in even more deeply. So, that extra time, we're finding is paying off.
So, the next slide is just highlighting, Kara started to speak to already that whenever we're looking at student assessment results, it's not a one-shot, one-and-done kind of approach. We're, in Berlin, we have a, as you know, a strong culture of continuous improvement and looking to see what we're doing and where we can get better. And for those reasons, we have been providing professional development on an ongoing basis in reading workshop, in writing workshop and in math studio as Kara just spoke to. So, the professional development might be internal people presenting, it might be having opportunities for people to go out to conferences, but the idea is that we're continuing to look at our practices and to orchestrate our performance. We also have looked at our process for test preparation, you know, and we're always trying to balance out, we don't want to become a test prep district where all we do is have the tests drive everything that we're doing. So, we don't want to become that and at the same time, we want to make sure that kids are adequately prepared and understand some of the ways in which you approach taking a test such as this, such as looking how to use your time, making sure that kids know how to navigate the screen and navigate option choices and highlighting tools and all of those kinds of things. There are assessments that are available through the State Department of Education that are interim assessments that can give teachers and students a test where they take an assessment and get quicker turnaround of the information. So, you can imagine that we take these assessments, our students take these assessments in April and May and then the results come back at the end of June or July and then it's moving back into the schools in August. That's a long time from when something was done to when you're actually getting the information back. So, the interim assessments and the other kinds of assessments that Kara mentioned give us the ability to use that assessment on a formative cycle to feed back into schools or classrooms. Okay, so I'm gonna move to SAT grade school results. So, you know that the SAT was revised three years ago, are we in the future? So, that they get a total overall score. We're going to look specifically at the scores in the two section scores, the evidence-based reading and writing and math, but below their, this just shows some of the complexity of the SAT in terms of the ways that now it connects to science, reading, to social studies, history reading, to understanding words in context and so on. So, here I shared with you the results from 16, 17 and 18. So, you see the number of students at levels three and four has gone up and the average score has gone up from a 532 two years ago to a 547. I do just want to say to you that unlike the scores where you're looking at 1,200 kids and looking at some of the performance of 1,200 kids, this is one class of students and SAT, just like you probably saw when you saw cap presentations, tends to be more like this because it's a totally different group of kids every year. So, it's not that you get results on sixth grade and you're working on it and you want to see improvement in the second grade, seventh grade. The kids take their, the assessment for this, even if they take the SAT multiple times, this assessment is the one that's provided on the school day that they do one time to come with these results. And this, in our English Language Arts, fourth in the DIRF here. And when we look at students with the different subgroups, we, excuse me, see again, a lower percentage of students scoring at goal or above goal from the high need subgroup as well as in the students receiving special education and the number of kids that get free and reduced lunch. In mathematics, the performance of last year's children's class was also higher than it has been the last couple of years, an average score of 537 with 55% of the students scoring at the college writing at levels three or four. And this, just like with the Sparta Balance CLA results, there is typically a smaller number of students who meet benchmark in mathematics performance than in the
Just on those numbers, I mean, that's pretty striking, from 45% to 55%, a 10-point increase in just one year, meeting or exceeding three or four. Is that correct?
Yes.
What counted for that?
Well, that's what I meant when I said it. It's not necessarily a strength increase because it's not one group of kids that got better, it's a different group of kids so that
So, is it, so you're saying there have to be really smart group of kids this year? I mean, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that when you test a group of kids, like when you test one group of kids from year to, like a different group of kids in 11th grade, different group of kids the next year in 11th grade, different group of kids next year in 11th grade. Some of the difference in performance can be attributed to things that are happening in that curriculum and some of the differences in performance can be attributed to the characteristics of kids in like that particular group of kids. So, I'm sure you've all experienced it, you have like a team that's great one year and a team that's not great another year. That particular groups of kids gel in different ways that.
There was a focus last year, I wasn't here, there was a focus on putting SAT-type questions embedded in the current curriculum in math and in ELA to, there was a focus on the SAT scores. Now, did that make a difference? Jake, like Erin said, it could just be the cohort. The only thing we have to go back to look at and we just started doing that mandatory is the PSATs. Students take the PSATs, start to look, there's some correlation between the two to see what that number was at, you know, at the scoring at that level than compared to. Otherwise, it's a one-shot task, not as, not as the Sparta Balance is, you know, three or eight.
So, typically what you see in a district that is improving their performance, when you look like at the 1,200 kids that are taking the Sparta Balance, because from year to year, it's about 200 of the 1,200 kids, but it's essentially the same group of kids. So, you have that large group and it moves through. If their performance is going up as a group, it's pretty sort of indicated that you're programmatically and curriculum-wise, the changes that you're making are improving the performance of that cohort. But the SAT, the cap of the high school, it was always a little bit harder because you're testing an entirely different group of students who have had different experiences up to that point and then the next year, you test an entirely different group of students. So, if I'm presenting next year and this, like I have that 2019 numbers, it's not, you know, we'd love to see them going up and up and up, but I'm cautioning you that it's also, it will be a different group of kids coming through and it is sometimes hard as educators to break out all of the variables and factors that influence the performance of a particular group of students.
You said if. Is there something we need to know?
If you present this next year.
See, I listen.
I did, I, I'm sorry, people with that. Yes, sometimes in some other districts, people who are in positions such as directors of science or director of literacy also share the presentation. Just saying, it might be a growth experience. So, our SAT math DIRF comparison, we were at the top of the DIRF in math for this particular year. So,
Charlie, you got that?
Yeah.
Charlie, wake up.
People that write in the papers say that our kids learn less every year. I think that proves that's wrong.
What did you say?
I'm being snarky because of some letter writing campaign earlier this year.
Could you just go back to the slide, just hang on that for a little longer? But I mean, to make the point, I mean, okay, we're number one, but also by a pretty healthy margin. I'm just curious, how, how do you know, like, that's in our DIRF, obviously, I mean, how would that compare to even higher?
I did not do that comparison, but So, I'm just gonna caution all of you because this is, I feel really strongly about this. When we're trying to beat people with DIRF comparisons, we are essentially hoping that kids in other districts learn less. I cannot, like, that I cannot, like, that hurts my heart to think that we would hope that other kids learn less to make more kids look better. That's, like, that, the whole premise of the way that they have redone the SAT and the Smarter Balance, Smarter Balance assessment with concrete levels of achievement is that theoretically, everyone in the state can achieve at high levels on these assessments, and we don't need to beat anyone else. We want to be looking at what we're doing and moving our performance higher.
Our students.
Yeah, I mean, off my soapbox. But I feel pretty strongly about this, that. I understand people are very anxious to know how they do compared to everyone else, but it's hard to think that we would want, like, we don't want to meet kids in Milford and be lethal that they have learned less than kids in Berlin. Like, that's just not good karma out into the world.
I agree with you. I suspect, though, that Jake's question is more about 55% meeting or exceeding the standard as opposed to 75%, like, comparing our kids to, you know, their levels of achievement to previous levels, and how much can we gain as compared with other districts? Not that we want for anyone else to learn less or do poorly, but how can we?
Perhaps we're the ones learning less.
Right, how can we increase that from 55% to?
To get some other.
Right, exactly. What's a reasonable, I think that, I don't want to speak for you, Jake, but I, that's what you're.
Well, clearly, I wasn't hoping for other districts to do poorly, so I think that's the, goes with that.
Correct, right.
Okay, then our math test, our subgroup results in mathematics that follows a similar pattern to what you saw at the other grade levels. And ongoing work and next steps, I broke this into two categories. One, that is more on the English social studies side that has more to do with the reading and writing reasoning pieces that are measured on the SAT under the evidence-based writing piece. We continue to provide professional development. One of the things that, of course, has been a concern of the high school for the past couple of years is that they feel like a lot of their professional development time has been tied up with the ES tasks in preparation for the visit. And you might have heard that in the presentations or in their self-study where they talk about the idea that a lot of their busy time has been going to that. So with that visit successfully behind us, they'll have more time available, but we've also been specifically looking at opportunities for our high school students to go out, or, excuse me, our high school teachers to go out and get some of the experiences that they're concerned about having missed. We are working, for example, in looking at the English curricula in terms of ways that we can increase reading engagement and reading stamina. We have a number of kids that report that they are not reading as much at the high school as we would like them to be reading. And with any of the extended testing situations, the stamina of being able to stick with something and to stay in a text when the text is more challenging or to push to read through a difficult passage is both a skill and a matter of practice in terms of having some of those experiences. And as Brian mentioned earlier, we do have now the PSAT being given routinely so that students get some of those additional practice times because the, the students having more opportunities to take the PSAT into the SAT does seem to give kids an advantage in terms of understanding how it works, what the test situation is like, with the book having a.
So just a question on that. So when is the PSAT, how was that instituted?
I'm sorry that I'm deferring that.
Yeah, PSATs, last year, the first time it was made, everyone's taken the PSATs. They're taking, you know, ninth and 10th now, right?
October, right?
Yeah.
Ninth of October.
Ninth and 10th. So last year, we did the 12th? Okay.
Okay, last year, I believe, was the first year, Jake, I'd have to look back, but I think last was the first year.
So to the point, and then I think you were getting it.
And then you can start looking at that cohort analysis.
So is this cohort that was 55%, for instance, was that the first cohort that also took the PSATs?
And also, the teachers are looking more at the SATs. They've spent time, they've gone to workshops, they're taking a greater look, not so much to say we're doing test prep, but if you're asking a question on a test, why not ask in a format that they're going to be more accustomed to when they take the PSATs? And that occurred both in ELA and math at the high school. And I'm not saying that that did or didn't, but that was something they did focus on last year, so.
So that's possible, that could be.
Yeah, no, no, in fact, right, just.
A pretty healthy improvement.
It could have, and those are still there on their assessments, those types of questions. So they're getting more, teachers are getting more acclimated to how the questions are written in that format. I think, you know, one thing, Aaron, if you could talk about the, you know, high needs and special education, a student could be in multiple subgroups. So a student who could be high needs, special education, and, you know, and free reduced lunch, that student can be counted three times going across. So those are the areas when you see the state report comes out, and they'll rate Berlin, you know, whether they rate each district as an exemplary school district. I think it's level one through five, if I'm correct, and one through four, and then they're rated. They look at the subgroups also, and that, that often, we had the high school was rated, we did get off that last year, was rated low because of the sub group. Not because of the overall performance, but because of where our subgroups, the growth targets were not where they needed to be, it wasn't just about threes and fours, the growth targets weren't where they needed to be at that time, but we did, we did, you know, work to get removed from that.
High needs collapses, free reduced lunch, special education, and.
English learners.
English learners, right, okay.
You know, but you could have the same, right?
Oh, no, I agree, they, so they're, they're extrapolated.
Right, so it's very important, it's very important to focus on those subgroups, right?
Right, but high needs is a collapsed group of multiple subgroups.
Conversely, if you improve the performance of one student who's in multiple groups.
Right, you get the, exactly.
Is increasing performance, that would give you a better class. It's also one of the challenges, right? Because the free reduced lunch list is private confidential information, so while we are charged with improving the performance of students in that group, the people in the schools are not allowed to know who is actually in that group. Unlike the, you know, the kids that are English learners are identified, students who are sent to special education services, it's much more broadly known within the school who those groups are. In math, similar kinds of things, and really just trying to highlight the idea that this is ongoing efforts where we continue to look at this across the year so that even though the assessments are, you know, one window and one reporting out to you, we are looking at continuously trying to improve the performance.
Kara and Lori, I always have the most that we'd like to have. You know, I think between the two of you, you talked about the major focus areas that you. Any other questions?
They're happy to have you present this year.
Yeah. Going back to the original with the SBA testing, you said those tests are, take place in the spring? Do all the tests take place in the spring? I could be wrong, I thought I remembered something where some students were taking it in the fall, some winter, some spring, and it was kind of a, maybe, am I, am I forgetting?
So it used to be the B C M T was all testing. I believe at what point C M T was all testing, CAP was spring testing. It moved, when we moved to Smarter Balance, it all moved to spring testing.
Okay.
So the window is pretty broad. It starts from, I think, mid-March until the end of May, into June. And there's a really chunk of time, and then we decide in that time.
So do all, say, third-grade students all take it the first week of March, and fourth grade all take, or is it a third grader can be taking it the first week of March, and another third grader, another class could be taking it a month from now after they've learned something more in that math curriculum?
So across districts, they can choose to do the testing anytime in that window. So some districts do choose to start late March, early April, some wait until later in the window. In our district, we work closely with the principals and establish our windows, so we're, I wouldn't say we're on the same day exactly, but we're in the same timeframe. So we'll do later April, generally speaking, the, all the schools will start with their language arts testing, and then the following week or so, they'll work on their math testing. And there's a couple of different math tests, so they take a little bit more time.
The kids in the three schools would take it within the same.
Within the same window of a week or so of each other.
And if you had four third-grade classes, for example, those four third-grade classes are all taking it at the same time within the school, or they're staying?
Not necessarily on the same day.
Okay.
But within the same week, actually.
Okay, okay, so same timeframe?
Yes.
Okay.
Which was a big concern in terms of comparison.
Well, yeah, because I'm thinking if you, if you have a month timeframe, and you have a student taking on day one versus a student taking on day 30, they're going to learn a lot within that 30-day period, and their math test or, you know, ELA can reflect that.
So it's one of the things that we're always trying to balance in the school district because if you push it all to the very end, you may have kids that need to have makeup tests, or you have kids that need special testing situations, it's harder to manage if you have all of the kids testing at the same time. And quite frankly, for test support and for bandwidth, the wireless connections, you are also trying to be cautious to a certain extent to stagger some of the testing so that we're not overloading the, our technical infrastructure and our technical support in terms of getting students on. I would say, you know, I was in the same role, you know, when, when all the test was paper and pencil, and then like started to move over to computerized testing, and a lot of the, like, trauma of like, oh my gosh, the third graders can't manage this, is, it's not even a point of conversation anymore. The kids just do it, they, they type, they navigate, they, like, it's not an issue.
Not about the SATs, but the Smarter Balance, is there a way we could see the results flushed out from the different elementary schools? I know a few of us down at this end were discussing as we were looking at them, and we were wondering, because we have the breakdown of elementary schools, whereas with the middle school, we have one middle school, with the high school, we have one high school, is that something we could get our hands on?
We can, we can get the data disertigated. What would be the purpose of that, though?
I'm just curious, to be quite honest with you. I'm not sure what the, what the ultimate end game would be, but I'm curious if, I'm looking for any trends anywhere.
We have it broken out by grade level, we have it broken, right, we have it broken out right down to by teacher. So we could definitely give it to you by school, so we could definitely get that data to you. We have it broken out right down to the teacher.
But just always being aware that our numbers at the schools are very different, so some were covered where it's a small population, every student is worth a couple of percentage points, and at a larger school.
I just think it's important to have the data, there's a point to have a discussion if there's questions about it, because as Kara was saying, when you have, you know, less than 40 students, the weight of that student for, for, you know, 10% is poor students, so, you know, the swings can be very great. And also to realize that, you know, when you're assigning certain students to certain teachers and so on, we take that into account, we start looking, we break it down to a teacher. We look at the growth of where the students were when they came in, and we actually break it down with different colors to say, did the student's growth target go up with that teacher? Because the goal should be that there's growth against where the student started in that classroom. If there's not, we want to question, why wasn't there growth? Was there something going on at home? Was there something outside that caused an impact, you know, or is there something going on with the teacher in the classroom? But we want to look at that. So, you know, we do break it down to that, to that level.
So what you're saying is you're already doing what I asked we could do.
Oh, we can get to data, yes.
Are you, you, no, I didn't mean that. I mean that you're already utilizing it down as deep as it will go to look for patterns. Is there, is there any connection between the SBA scores, S plus scores, whatever they're calling it now, and the teacher evaluation plan? Like, are they, are they part of their target goals, or is that not as part of their plan?
Well, the state removed that, you know, the state removed that requirement. So it was, up until the state requirement, it was part of it. But that data is shared, and I can share that many teachers want to know right away, you know, where their students were, and did they make growth? And if there wasn't, you know, I mean, some teachers are devastated to have made growth, and they, you know, are very concerned about it. Or it is part of the discussion, though, you know, especially against their growth target, because the growth target is something that was the, you know, hundreds of thousands of data points to come up with that growth, growth target. So it's not saying you're going to take a student who's at a level one, and that student is going to take this student to level three in a year.
Right.
But we are saying, we're expecting you to show growth, that that student should show growth by being in your classroom for the year. And if not, based on our system with SRBI or our shares, and there should be a discussion of what's going on and what aren't we doing for that student to make progress? So, you know, most teachers can probably predict which students would make progress against their growth before they even take the SBA assessment, because they know. But I'd gladly share with you the school data. We have that, we'll have it broken out for you by grade level, so you'll see the grade levels also.
Thank you.
It's not a problem at all.
I agree with you, you were saying, Brian, too, though, and I didn't even think of that as I asked the question, because I know typically in elementary school classes, you put your higher needs students with your strongest teachers, so their data might not.
I just, and I hate to be callous, I didn't want that data, I don't want that data out. I wouldn't want people to make assumptions about people.
Correct.
Because there are teachers that are clearly have those students that are not performing as well, and maybe selected to that teacher because we know that over time, that teacher does get great performance, and then maybe some of they don't reach, and it's not, it's not any fault of that teacher for not doing it.
I wouldn't want this individual teacher's names. I was just curious if by the only, there was any kind of pattern.
That's, no, I could definitely share it with you, it's not a problem. Like, if that's, you know, just like I said, I just wouldn't want it to be shared, that's all, outside of.
Thanks, fair.
Yep.
Any other questions? Aaron, thank you very much. Florine, Kara, thank you very much for your work.
Can we see you appear next year? Can we talk to them, or?
Next up, we have policy review and revision, which is policy 5141, our wellness is our second reading. If you remember, this was at our last board meeting with a first reading. Those changes and edits have been made to this second version here. Are there any questions or comments about this second revision and what is now the second reading of this policy for wellness?
I have way too many questions tonight, I have a quick, a brief one. The part on nutrition, education, and promotion, since teachers may not use candy as a reward, is that something new that's going in with this, or did that exist before?
Language previously said teachers are encouraged not to.
Oh, that's right, I did see that. That was in the original reading of it.
It said they're encouraged not to, now it says they need.
Now it says they can't.
Now it says they can't. Do chips count as candy?
So I know I asked this at the last subcommittee meeting, not the one just prior to this meeting, and under appropriate instruction, there was a, there's a note about no use of phys ed to be for punishment for inappropriate behavior, but I had asked the question about taking away recess, right, as a form of punishment? And I don't know, I don't remember what the answer was to that. I don't know if you said it was in another policy or if it was not relevant to this policy.
Sure, I said neither one of us canceled.
Okay.
We did research it after, because I had very confidently told you that it was a law.
Right, right.
It is not actually a law.
Okay.
Because I had tried to find it. The law says that the district will make a policy.
Okay.
So many districts across the state adopted policies shortly after that legislation was put in place.
Okay.
Berlin does not currently have a policy to.
So the policy committee's got.
I believe that Mr. Oaks will be right.
He'll be dead, Mom.
There is a requirement around providing a period of physical activity, so districts are interpreted in different ways. So some districts believe that if the kid has phys ed that day, they could lose recess because the phys ed would have counted as their period of physical activity, and some districts have drawn a firm line and said absolutely not, no taking away recess, and other districts have allowed a portion of the recess to be taken away, so the policy committee, I'm sure, will have a rich discussion about it.
Well, thank you for researching, because I appreciate the information.
How about from the other side? Does this involve sports or just in the classroom? Like, can, can a team be out there and a couple of kids are fooling around and go take two laps? You're fooling around, you're not listening. How does that impact?
It's not go too far now.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
For a fourteen, the way I would interpret that without, you know, contact, the sports team, you're, you're choosing to be on that team.
Okay.
So the coach is in charge. So if you're not, if that's disciplinary action, say, run two laps, and you don't want to do it, and you're on the team, well, then, you know, that's the coach's. But during the school day, as Aaron said, it's really interpretation based on whether you have a policy. So if you're having physical activity, many districts have said, if you have phys ed that day, then you could take away recess and still meet the requirement, but I think it's better if we have a policy that clearly defines.
But I think it's better if we have a policy that clearly defines how.
Yeah.
Do the questions posed this evening relative to this policy keep us from adopting what's written here?
Is there anything, I mean, to Rich's point, is there anything that would require further clarification, that this is specific to school day activities? And in words, that, that piece of no use of physical activity for punishment for inappropriate behavior is restricted, is, does not apply to teams? As you said, like, does that have to be within this policy, or is it not?
I don't think so, because that's not within the school day, right? If the team does, it's after school.
Okay, so this specifies that it's just within the school day. Okay.
I don't think it is.
Just to jump in, um, when, we just did have the policy reviewed by the State Department as part of the audit of the Food Services Program, and the feedback that we got back was that the policy minimally meets the requirements of the state policy. But one of the suggestions that they had was that we add administrative regulations that clarify some of the procedures in terms of implementation. So it's possible that the policy committee at some point would be asked to take up administrative regulations on implementation of the wellness policy.
As an addendum. Or something like.
I have a question. This is, it's more personal, I think, than anything for, like, the fifth grade parties that are at the end of school, that are on campus. That's what I'm asking. So is there no longer food that's able to be provided if it's not provided by Food Services? Because when you read this, it says, as per state regulations, because of the district's policy, lunch programs, for breakfast, no groups should sell or distribute any food or beverages anywhere in the school, promise 30 minutes prior up until 30. So any?
Oh. So field day in the Willard Field would be a violation?
Exactly, so is all food that is provided now has to come from Food Services, which is going to be very expensive.
All of that, like Rich, has to do with the healthy food certification that we are using for the CHIPS board.
So we had had this discussion in previous years. Last year, remember, we had this whole talk, and we just kind of went to the wayside. So I'm bringing it up again, because it confuses me, because when you read this, it says, no, you cannot be provided.
The way we've interpreted that in the past is that when it talks about 30 minutes before, after school, we have all of those guidelines. So the, the example I give is McGee. McGee used to have a candy sale for fundraising for DC.
Yes.
That where students got a box of candy, and they would take it home, and some maybe would sell it on the bus, or eat it on the bus. Now, due to candy sale, they no longer can take that with them. Parents have to come in and physically pick that up. Parents can't, the kids can't even touch it, touch the food. So the way we interpreted this year, we did not say last year that it would prohibit end of the year parties and so on. We did not touch on, I don't know, Aaron, that was on part of the committee. We did not say, as we talked about last year, and it was Wendy looked into it, Wendy Rollins, our Food Service Director, looked into providing cupcakes or some type of food for you.
Snacks.
Snack. That was healthy, and she said that she really couldn't find anything that, that appealing to students. And so we did not touch on it last year. I don't know if the new policy this year, putting forth, did you test when that was discussed?
Jamie, just to, to give interpretation, I would say this specifically references groups, such as the PTO, school stores are closed. So you as mom of child A.
But it's not. Because it's not. So in those, it will, no, because if you're coming in for the end of school, it's, it's a, and I, yes, I see what you're saying, and it's not just this particular blurb that's written. It's, if, if you read through this, it's in conjunction with the healthy food standards. We are supposed to be providing by, through the food service, whatever. Because we had, I remember we had this discussion in detail last year, and yes, Brian, you're right, we could, we kind of were like.
We were trying to address, and we still, I still have the parents to address, that with the food allergies.
Yes.
That's, that we're trying, it wasn't so much, we were trying to address food allergies that, that when people bring things from home, and not aware of what they're, what's, what they're made of. And that's what we were trying to address during that conversation.
Yes.
That's so much of healthy foods. I'm just trying to think about this here, you know, even when we have the HPA promotion, PTO provides.
Exactly.
But if it's at the 30 minutes after the end of the school.
After the end of the school.
School day, I, I don't know how closely we have to, you know, it doesn't say if a parent brings in food here. And I don't know if it was addressed in committee, was it was going to shut down the cupcakes for birthday? Was that discussed in the committee? I don't know, Aaron.
We did not take a stance on that birthday.
Just looking through this, I care what you're saying. So on the first page, under Nutrition, Education, and Promotion, the part where I feel like there is a caveat that could allow for individuals' schools to develop their own policies, is that it says each school will develop snack guidelines to encourage healthy eating habits. Parents will be provided with healthy snack guidelines and opportunities, blah, blah, blah. So I can imagine that that might be interpreted at the school level as these, this is the, these are the guidelines for our individual school as to what you are encouraged or, and or prohibited from bringing in?
They are, they are, I know the elementary share what healthy snacks are.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean that everyone adheres to that.
Right.
And some parents have a strong feeling, that's my child, I'm going to.
You know what I mean, for like a party, like what Jamie is talking about, or a celebration of some sort, there are, I think, some, some schools, just speaking anecdotally, are perhaps more stringent than others about what they permit or don't. Well, and then taking that a little bit further, like, so, I'm not right, I'll lock you there. It's, it's, it's just, it's confusing, it's to.
If you're, if you're concerned about being able to allow groups to have parties at the end of the year, for the holidays, whatever it is, it's simple enough just to say discretion of the superintendent, now it's going to damage the intent of anything that you're doing here.
That puts a lot of, like, back on base.
We had a discussion.
I'm still, I'm still shaking my head over the kids can't take the candy home. Fair enough, it's going to be a big, I don't want to give a start.
And with the choice, it actually had to be delivered. So it's, it's, so, do, do you want to wait there for a discussion on this? So I'll, you know.
May I make a suggestion? May I suggest that, so when we talked about this at the Wellness Committee, and we talked about it with the consultant, what she suggested was that if we're making small changes, we're not, like, to change the language from may not use, or not, or not, or encourage.
Will not.
To versus will not. The policy language says that you, as a board, will review this policy, that the Wellness Committee will review it annually and make more recommendations for revisions. So you're going to have more opportunities to keep coming back to this and revise it as needed, or as circumstances warrant. It would seem prudent to me that perhaps if we developed some administrative regulations around the implementation of the policy, that we could try to address some of the concerns that are being raised in terms of the specific concerns about exceptions and celebrations and things like that.
So I, I see this as two separate things. There's a wellness policy, and I see it as a classroom celebration policy, which we don't have today. And I think that that's the conversation that we had last year, is do we need to put a policy together that specifically talks about classroom celebrations and what we can and can't have in the classroom?
You could do that, or you could approve the policy and have administrative regs drafted for the implementation of the policy, and that would address the interpretation of things that, rather than create an entirely separate policy. Because the issue seems to be around the interpretation of this policy in those particular settings.
That we don't want potentially create a policy that conflicts with this policy, based on interpretation.
Exactly.
So let me ask, is, to Rich's point, is what we're having a conversation about even an issue?
It's not unusual to pass a policy and then have the administrative regs flushed out.
Relative to.
Yeah, I mean, we had this same kind of discussion last year. It was, and it wasn't, it was a, it was a situation and, and questions that came up community-wide, because everyone was very concerned about how specific we would be, or what, how we, as we know, other school districts that are close around us follow this differently than what we do, or maybe a little more lenient as to what we, so that's why.
That's exactly what we talked about, Jamie, you're spot on. And you could talk about, you know, there are districts that have gone to nothing being brought in, that nothing edible being brought in for, and then as artists have gone that direction, and then have gone back.
Exactly.
And we were concerned about that. I mean, my big question is, based on the statement here, as state regulations, it talks about groups, you know, it doesn't talk about individuals. So maybe that's the guidelines, what regulation would get in.
Maybe it stays to groups, and maybe it's kind of in your interpretations.
And then to have, as Aaron said, a regulation that's consistent at all schools about what can be brought in, might be the way to go. You know, or we leave it, and we bring it back to the board to look at at a later date.
I think we should leave it and bring it back, because I think there's too many questions, and I know that this caused a lot of discussion last year, and it caused a lot of people really freaking out on both ends. And I think by adopting this right now, with all of us still having a number of questions that we do, and not necessarily having the answers, or having all the right things in place, we could really set ourselves up for a lot of questions that we don't have the answers for, and a lot of upset parents on both ends. Or it'll just pass like it did last year, and we're, you know, do what we did last year. I mean, it's, it's just, it's just my thought process from what happened last year is to this year, it's kind of, I feel like we're groundhog day, like, we're having the same discussion. But I think this is different than last year's. This is more in-depth, this has. But it's still, to me, it still brings up, like, so, I mean, because groups can be interpreted in different ways. It's, again, it's, it's kind of, then I think it needs to be communicated, that like, school, school to school, that needs to be developed, because that, you might have one principal who goes to the absolute extreme and says, no, we follow board policy to a T, and then others that say, well, I heard that it's a loose policy, and we can interpret it, you know, and then you might have someone at Willard versus Hubbard upset that.
That's the point, that's the point of the regulations. The regulations would be a separate document that defines that, not.
That is more specific, yes.
Not dependent upon the approval or tabling of this policy. So that issue can come subsequent to this policy being decided. So what remains at that point becomes concern, to run to Jamie's point, over the connotation of groups versus individuals.
We'll get that clear.
That's, that's all I'm asking.
To me, this, and I'm not being argumentative with you, Jamie, I don't know which side of it you're on, and I really don't care, to be perfectly frank, because there's a case for both, you know, wanting it or not wanting it. To me, I would interpret if you, as the mom of the kid for the party, were bringing in something individually, you don't fall under the auspices of this.
Well, and that's just it, it's the interpretation of it, and that's all I'm saying. I agree. It's not either one way, it's their interpretation of.
And the other piece is that each school developing snack guidelines, guidelines are different from policy, yet people will sometimes use those terms and interpret them interchangeably. Use them interchangeably.
The regulations will, regulations tell us how we're meeting the policy.
Exactly, right.
So if we write the regulations for how snacks should be brought in, as long as they don't contradict the policy, it'd be all set.
Which, Brian, I'm fine with that, as long as there's some.
Right.
And like you said, as long as there's, this is fine with me, as long as there's some further.
Extension.
Thing. Extension of, which is fine.
Well, it seems, it seems, it seems that there's a difference in, in what really is allowing.
Yeah, exactly. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
I have some clarification on that.
Yeah.
So here's what I would recommend, is I recommend that we table this until the next meeting. Brian, you'll get a clarification on page two of this paragraph, the last paragraph, and I would also like the line that Carrie asked about no use of physical activity for punishment for inappropriate behavior to, during the school day, in the classroom, whatever that is, because we do have an issue where, that maybe that if you're an athlete, you would need to go run two laps, and that's part of that coach's policy. But I will tell you that if I were a parent, I would look at this and says, it says physical activity and other school-based activities. I would go right to it and say, you can't make my son run those two laps, because here's what the policy says. Because of the other school-based activities, sports teams are clearly a school-based activity. So let's clarify those two, those second ones, this one? And let's bring it back for our next board meeting, where we can adopt it then. Now, in the meantime, we probably do need to put some structure around what we can do in the schools with exceptions and so forth, so let's make sure we're consistent. Any questions? Good with that? Let me get the bag. So that completes our agenda. I just have one reminder that we have our board retreat scheduled for January 11th, Friday night, January 11th, and January 12th. A lot of work and time is going into the preparation for this event, and we've known about it for quite some time, so please, please be in attendance for that.
Do you know where it's going to be?
We're very close to having that for you. It will be pretty local.
Okay.
Okay, we're not, we're not going far. But it will also will not be on any school grounds. Okay?
So Friday night and Saturday, what are the, do you know what the times are for that supposed to be?
Right now, we're looking at 5:30 to 9:00 on Friday night, and we will start 8 o'clock on Saturday morning until 12:30.
It's pretty early.
You can do it. With that reminder, and also, so that's 11 to 12. You have Sunday off, we come back to a board meeting on, on Monday, the 14th.
I'm sure it's not weekend.
Which is also right in the middle of budget meetings. With that said, item number seven.
Move to adjourn.
I have a motion by Julia.
Second.
Second by Carrie. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? We are adjourned.